introduction of body worn cameras which began to be rolled out in 2017. Two years later, all patrol officers were equipped with body worn cameras and NYPD guidelines instructed officers how to use them. Body worn cameras can increase transparency but only if the policies that govern their use and access to their footage prioritize transparency. New York City's current policies on access to body worn camera footage have unfortunately fallen short of prioritizing public transparency. Governments in numerous states and cities across this country use body worn cameras for police officers while maintaining footage access policies that are significantly better than New York City's. Not only has the public in our city lacked adequate access to footage, but the entities responsible for oversight of the NYPD have also faced obstacles to accessing it undermining their ability to fulfill statutory oversight duties. For example, the civilian complaint review board's investigations into police misconduct from the 2020 George Floyd protests were reported to be hampered by the police department not turning over body worn camera footage in a timely fashion. The office of the NYPD inspector general and New Yorkers, including the media, have also faced challenges accessing footage in a reasonably streamlined way. There is clearly a transparency gap regarding body worn camera footage that requires examination and solutions. A few of the bills we will hear today seek to address these gaps. I have sponsored[101.49][101.49]introduction 938, which requires the NYPD to provide the CCRB with direct access to all body worn camera footage. As the city's civilian oversight body of the NYPD, timely and unedited access to body worn camera recordings is vital to achieving its mission of thoroughly and impartially investigating civilian complaints. The office of the inspector general for the NYPD and the department of investigation issued a report examining how body worn camera footage is used by city agencies tasked with ensuring police oversight and investigating allegations of misconduct. It found that the lengthy processes involved, including waiting on NYPD staff to conduct searches of the recordings and approve requests severely hampered the CCRB's ability to investigate complaints in a timely manner. My bill addresses these hindrances by providing the CCRB with direct access comparable to the NYPD's internal affairs bureau while another bill addresses other access issues. Additionally, various state laws prohibit the CCRB from viewing sealed records. CCRB investigations are often significantly delayed because of the process to unseal records, an issue that has arisen in the administrative prosecution of NYPD officer Wayne Isaacs for the killing of Delron Small. At times, this impediment means that CCRB investigations can quickly approach their 18-month statute of limitations without the records needed to move a case forward. To address this, my pre-considered resolution calls on the state legislature to pass legislation that would provide the CCRB with access to sealed records so that it can complete its duties and functions in a timely manner. The last bill I will mention is introduction 781A, which pertains to reporting on vehicle stops. Last session, as public safety committee chair, I sponsored this bill that became local law 45 requiring the NYPD to provide quarterly reports on traffic stops and the demographic data related to them. The data on police stops released thus far shows that black and Latino drivers are disproportionately the target of them as well as their resulting arrests, searches, and uses of force. The sheer number of these stops in our city, reported for the first time as a result of my previous bill, is a cause for serious concern. There were over 670,000 stops last year, a number that compares to the highest level of pedestrian stop question and frisks during the Bloomberg administration. We know that police traffic stops nationally have been identified as disproportionately and unduly likely to escalate into dangerous and fatal encounters for drivers. Many police departments across the country have been overhauling their use of traffic stops, moving away from them because of the severe racial disparities and excessive risks of use of force. The deaths of Tyree Nichols in Memphis, Dante Wright in Minnesota, Rayshard Brooks in Atlanta, Jordan Edwards in Texas, and many others occurred as a result of traffic stops. New York City should be a national leader, not lagging in forward thought and progress attempted by police departments across the country. I commend the public advocate for proposing this bill to further expand reporting on traffic stops. Between these pieces of legislation and the other bills we are hearing today, the council hopes to further enhance transparency with the city's police department because it is critical to making our communities safer. We look forward to hearing from the public, the NYPD, and advocates today about these bills and their ultimate goal of advancing transparency. Before we begin, I would like to thank our amazing diligent committee staff for their work in organizing this hearing, and I now turn it back into the hands of our committee chair, Councilmember Hanks.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd also like to thank my Public Safety Committee council for all the hard work they've done and my team. We have been joined by council members virtually, Caban, and in the council chambers, Bacher, De La Rosa, Ariola, Vernikov, Palladino, and Joseph. Now I'll pass it along to Josh.
Great, thank you Chair. Well now turn for opening statements for some of the bill sponsors. I'll also kind of note that we're going to do a panel of public testimony in advance before administration testimony. So we're going to do some opening statements and then we're going to let a couple of directly impacted individuals speak and then move on to the administration. So for the built opening statements, Public Advocate Williams, Councilmember Hudson, Councilmember Stevens, and Councilmember Caban who's on Zoom. So Public Advocate, you may go ahead and then we'll move on to the other folks.
Thank you so much. As mentioned, my name is Jermaine Williams, public advocate of the city of New York. I want to thank Chair Hanks and the members of the committee on public safety for holding this important hearing and for hearing my bills. Also want to thank the speaker for being present and align myself with her statements. We often talk about some improvements that have occurred, but I do know and always say that the two buckets, as the speaker mentioned, that we haven't seen any movement at all, in my opinion, is transparency and accountability. Everyday New Yorkers are stopped by the NYPD. Sometimes this results in a search, a level three stop where an officer has legal authority to detain someone and prevent them from leaving, colloquially known as stop and frisk. The NYPD is required to report on these stops so we know that black and brown people are disproportionately stopped. Black, Latino, Latinx New Yorkers made up 91% of reported stops as of 2020. Motor vehicle stop data for 2022 revealed similar disparities. The NYPD has disproportionately frisked and used force against black and Latinx Latino people. As we have seen all too often, these stops can escalate quickly to violent or even deadly situations. We still, however, do not have the full picture of who is being stopped by the NYPD as they are not currently required to report on level one and level two stops. Despite being lower level stops, the feeling of being stopped, questioned, and possibly searched by police is indistinguishable from the experience of level three stops. That is why I've introduced intro 586, which would require the NYPD to report on all levels of police stops and encounters, including the location where they happened, demographic information of those stopped, the factors that led to the interaction, and whether the encounter leads to any use of force or enforcement action. According to the New York Civil Liberties Union, in 2022, 49% of drivers arrested following traffic stops were black and 39% were Latinx and Latino. I have introduced intro 781, which will require the NYPD to include in vehicle encounter reports the justification used by an officer to conduct a vehicle stop if an observed offense was cited as justification for a vehicle stop, and whether the offense was at the level of infraction, violation, misdemeanor, or felony. In order to effectively address racial bias in policing, we need to know the full scope of the problem, and in a time when Mayor Adams has resurrected the NYPD's notorious street crime unit, now called neighborhood safety teams, this information is crucial. In addition to underreporting on stops, the NYPD has historically shirked responsibility when it comes to granting access to body worn camera footage. This lack of compliance with requests for access to body worn camera footage seriously impedes investigations by oversight agencies, including the CCRB and the Department of Investigations, OIG, NYPD. The NYPD has falsely denied that footage exists or refused to turn over footage citing embellished privacy issues and have been generally slow to respond to requests. While many other cities give their police oversight bodies direct access to body worn camera footage, New York City does not, causing delays and roadblocks in the CCRB and OIG NYPD investigations. These delays deny justice for victims of police abuse and brutality and increase New Yorkers' fears and distrust of the police. My bill, intro 0585, and a bill I'm proud to co-sponsor with Speaker Adams, intro 938, seek to increase and expedite oversight agencies' access to body worn camera footage. Intro 585 would require the NYPD to share all body worn camera footage with OIG NYPD and the Department of Records and Information Services within five days of the recording. Intro 938 would grant the CCRB direct access to all footage recorded by officers of body worn cameras. CCRB would have real-time connectivity network services hosting digital files of body worn camera footage, allowing them to search, view, and use files for the purpose of investigating prosecuting allegations of police misconduct. We have seen time and time again that there is systemic bias still existing, and the NYPD have consistently impeded any effort to hold them accountable by oversight agencies. Elected officials, members of the community, increasing police presence in our communities will never increase public safety simply by itself when the people in those communities only associate police with trauma, fear, discrimination, and abuse. I look forward to working with the city councils, the CCRB, and OIG NYPD to ensure that the NYPD complies with the bills we are hearing today. I did want to also say that it's important to talk about the disparity in these stops, and I also mentioned disparity of violence that occurs in black and brown communities. Often, the latter is the excuse for the former. However, this was the same thing I heard 10 years ago. And so if the response was supposed to solve the disparity in violence in our communities, it has not. It has never. It will never. And so while we are clear that there has to be some police activity due to certain things that are going on, what we are clear is that the overuse of policing will never solve these problems. 10 years, we've been saying. Black and brown people have been shot and killed and harmed, and for 10 years we've seen overpolicing, and it's still the same disparity. So I'm hoping with having discussions, we don't get the same pushback that we always get because it doesn't help keep our communities safer. What we're asking for is simple information and simple changes. The mayor, Eric Adams, was involved in actually getting the initial information that we needed to get the information on these stops. Now that we have it, I hope he joins us with this as well, and that we can get forward to talking about the real issues of public safety and what police involvement is, as well as other agencies. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Public Advocate. Next we'll hear from Councilmember Hudson, Stevens, and then Caban for another opening.
Thank you so much, and thank you Chair Hanks for providing me the opportunity to speak about my bill, introduction 538. As members of this committee likely know, the Right to Know Act requires NYPD officers to identify themselves during investigative stops and obtain proof of consent to conduct a search that would otherwise have no legal basis. Officers are required to report on the number of times it gained consent to search individuals and demographic data on those individuals. My bill, introduction 538, is a common sense, good government bill that will bring much-needed transparency to the NYPD. This bill builds on the Right to Know Act by requiring the NYPD to report on the number of requests for consent to search. As such, this would expand the report requirement to include not just searches that happened but also those that were requested. We need this data to fully understand the comprehensive scope of search requests by the NYPD. For all we know, NYPD officers might be attempting to stop New Yorkers at significantly higher rates, but New Yorkers who know their rights deny those attempts. Without a law requiring the NYPD to provide this information, we're unlikely to voluntarily receive it from them. This bill notably includes provisions for requests to search things like vehicles, homes, properties, or even a forensic sample of DNA, and it requires the NYPD to report whether the officer used interpretation services when attempting to obtain consent to search from someone with limited English proficiency. Simply put, we need true police oversight, transparency, and accountability. That means everything from immediately firing officers who harm or kill New Yorkers, disbanding the SRG, deeply investing in community-based safety alternatives, and bypassing these two bills. I'd like to thank the 27 co-sponsors of this bill, many of whom are here today, and Communities United for Police Reform for their fierce advocacy. I urge every member of this committee to support this bill, co-sponsor it if you haven't already, and work with us to shed more light on the NYPD's activities. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next we'll hear from Councilmember Stevens, followed by Caban.
Transparency is much needed when it comes to government, which is why I believe intro 638, a local law to amend the administrative code of New York City in relation to reporting on the use of large donations received by NYPD. It is imperative that the public knows who and where the money is going and how it's being spent. This piece of legislation will ensure that there will no longer be blind spots and create more transparency in one of the largest funded city agencies. This transparency will allow us to provide a more efficient oversight to ensure that the NYPD is correctly utilizing monetary donations. I would like to thank all the co-sponsors who signed on, and if you have not done so, please sign on to this bill, and I'm open to having a dollar with NYPD about this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next we'll turn to Councilmember Caban, who will join us through Zoom. I'll unmute you in just a second. Let me go ahead.
Thank you. Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to give an opening statement. As was mentioned before, a couple of my bills are being heard, and you know, if this committee's recent hearings have made one thing abundantly clear, it's that we owe the people of New York City a greater degree of oversight over the NYPD. At the hearing on the Strategic Response Group, otherwise known as SRG, that the department didn't attend, we learned from the civilian complaint review board that they are not privy to any data on bias-based policing, and clearly that's intolerable, and far less than we owe the people of New York City, for sure. And at last week's preliminary budget hearing, the department's testimony in response to the chair's careful questions about misconduct was immediately contradicted by that of the CCRB, though once again NYPD leadership was not in attendance to hear or answer for this discrepant account. And so I'm grateful that we're hearing intros 443 and 386 today in the interest of transparency, accountability, and our New York City where no one need fear that they will be on the receiving end of bias-based policing or other forms of police misconduct that will escape the attention of those of us charged with oversight. And so thank you to Queensborough President Richards for partnering with us on these bills, and I will pass it back to you all. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Councilmember.
Just for the record, I'd like to let everyone know that we've been joined by Councilmember Mealy.
Thank you, Chair. So as I mentioned, we're going to begin the first panel with some members of the public. I'm going to list the following names. Please come up to the dais as your names are called. We'll be giving each individual three minutes to speak, and then we'll move on to the testimony from the administration. So first we'll hear from Gladys Williams, Sean Williams, Sammy Feliz, Steve Cahoot, Ibrahim X, and Robert Willis. Yeah, so come on up to the dais and make your -- yeah. And you all could go in whatever order you want.
Excuse me. My name is Ibrahim X, and I'm a vocal New York leader with the civil rights and homelessness unions. I'm not a politician, but I always represent Crown Heights. I'm a black man. I'm homeless. I have a criminal record, felonious criminal record, violent, whatever you want to call it. I also live with mental illness. Been policed and criminalized for each of those identities. I've been stopped by police in this city more times than I can count. Unfortunately for people like myself, I'll give a few names. Tyree Nichols, Sahid Vassil from Crown Heights, Sean Bell, George Floyd, Sandra Bland. We all know the names and the hashtags. Their lives were stopped by police stops. My life has also been almost stopped. I've had police put guns to my head. In fact, if you notice, when I open my mouth, I'm missing a tooth. I'm missing a tooth as a result of a police stop in Queens. Officer Howsey George, in particular, if he's listening. I've been stopped by the police for locking up my bike at a railing and told that, oh, I might be stealing cars because there's cars next to the railing. I've been stopped by the police for being in a smoke shop and asked what was I doing in a certain place that I was never at. I've been stopped by the police for being in a train station and wrongfully accused of not paying my fares because they just assumed that I didn't pay my fare. All these are interruptions in my life. To you, there are words in intro 586. To Tyree Nichols and the other people that Councilmember Adams, excuse me, Speaker Adams mentioned, their lives were stopped by police stops. And I just want to take a minute as someone who is personally impacted to share my condolences and my inspiration for the Antonio Williamson family. Because I know my mother's not alive, but she'd be sitting right here. My father might be sitting right here. So I take this very deeply because I have a child, in fact, I have a few children, and I never want to be sitting here in their position. So I'm going to fight every day of my life, whether you want to hear me or not. I'm going to be here. Normally would not be here. I'd be on the block. I'm going to stop, hang out on the block, and I'm going to start hanging out here until you realize that people like me are being stopped, and we're not just being stopped. Our lives stop when the police stop us. You need to understand that because maybe it's boring to you, or if you're Caucasian, you've never had that happen, but unfortunately it happens. And if you want to live in America where that's allowed to happen to me, then I don't know what to tell you. I can't live in that America. And I'm not going to live in that America, not that New York State, and not that New York City. So I urge you to follow your council members and pass intros 538 and 586 because you can't ask me for accountability through the police if they're not having accountability. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
Hello, my name is Gladys Williams. I'm the stepmother of Antonio Williams, who was unjustly murdered by the NYPD on September 29, 2019. I'm also a member of the Justice Committee, an organization that works with families whose lost loved ones to police. Antonio was a loving presence in our family. I remember the day he found out he was having a son. He recorded his reaction and shared that joy with us. Now, there's a player missing in the basketball competitions with his father and his brothers. There's a heartbreaking absence at our holidays when the families gather together. Antonio was simply waiting for a cab, not bothering anybody, when he was approached by the plainclothes cops. The NYPD was different definitions of level one, two, and three stops. If officers don't have the reasonable suspicion you're involved in a crime, that's level one and two, and you should be free to leave. Antonio should have been free to go. But the reality is to us that the different levels of the stops usually feel the same. NYPD doesn't tell you what level stop it is as they approach or any time. It's frightening. You feel as though officers are detaining you. You feel like you are in danger. But in worst cases, the NYPD escalates these encounters and someone ends up beaten or killed, like what happened to our son Antonio. If we had more transparency on how the NYPD is using low-level stops to harass and abuse black and Latinx New Yorkers before Antonio was killed, maybe he would still be here today. If officers are forced to report every stop and where they're making them, they'll be less likely to use these stops in illegal and abusive ways because they know they will be exposed. That's why my family and other families who have lost loved ones to the NYPD are calling on the city council to pass the How Many Stops Act immediately. We are also calling for Mayor Adams and Commissioner Sewell to fire all the officers involved in our son's murder and disband neighborhood safety teams. We must take action to ensure that what happened to our sons does not happen again. How Many Stops Act is one of the several pieces that must come together for real NYPD transparency and community safety. The city council has the opportunity to move NYC away from safety regime and relies on policy and criminalization to the one priority, safety, justice, and dignity for all. The first effort for you to take is passing the How Many Stops Act. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
How you doing? My name is Sean Williams, father of Antonio Williams, who was unjustly killed September 29, 2019 by NYPD officers. Like my wife mentioned, he was standing outside waiting for a cab when plainclothes officers jumped out. Unconstitutional stop or illegal stop, chased him, beat him, and murdered him. NYPD claims Antonio had a gun but was never pulled and that was never fired. My son was not a threat to anyone, to any officer. I've never seen anybody being a threat with their back turned and running away. He should have been allowed to walk away, run away, whichever, because they had no suspicion to stop him. But they initiated the whole thing. Not only did they murder my son, they killed one of their own. And they blamed that on him. That's why passing this How Many Stops Act is very important. Then also, we have the mayor of New York patting himself on the back about what happened in Memphis, with the Scorpion Team. But putting the same four people on the street and just rebrandishing it with a different name is just, all you did is just switch the name up. Same people out there, you're just trying to make it seem like it's something different, but the same officers. Then you bring back the same thing that, the same law that got my son and many others murdered by the NYPD. People like Eric Gardner and others. No reason for stopping them. You just decided that you're going to be the judge, jury, and executioner. You're going to make your own laws, even though you swore to protect the community against criminals. So how do you protect the community when you're the criminals yourselves, when you initiate all interactions and run the streets, the community of black and Latinx communities pretty much being a bully? Approaching people as if it's my way and this is it. It's what we say, and if there's nobody there to speak or see anything, it's your word against the person who's deceased, pretty much, and they can't speak for themselves. So that's why passing this act is so important because it has to stop sometimes. Why not now?
I want to thank you both for your testimony. I offer you my deepest condolences, and I appreciate your courage and everything that you said here today. And I also want to thank the speaker for allowing the public to come and testify so you could really hear the voice of the people. So I appreciate. Next.
Hi, my name is Sammy Feliz. I'm the brother of Alan Feliz, who was unjustly stopped in his car, beaten, tasered, and shot and killed by NYPD Sergeant Jonathan Rivera and officers Michelle Emmanzar and Edward Barrett in the Bronx on October 17 of 2019. I am also the founder of the Alan Feliz Foundation, and I am also a member of the Justice Committee who helps organize families who have lost loved ones to police violence. After Sergeant Rivera shot After Sergeant Rivera's shot...